And the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. We have a crowd here today that's great. We welcome people to come to our board today. Especially excited when it's a lot of our students. It's even up there, so we look forward to that. Mr. Baker and Mrs. Smith aren't here today, but they're with us via the miraculous telephone here so they can hear us. Carol, you were about a half a second behind on the pledge again this time. And now Riley's learned, you know, he just speaks quietly, we can't hear him, so.
Actually, I've learned to speak about a half a second in front of you all, so we tell you at the same time.
Whatever you do, you've got it nailed, I'll tell you that much. Okay, once again, we're glad everybody with us. We're going to begin today with approving the amendments of the August 20th, 2019 regular meeting. Do you have a motion please? Mr. Wilkinson made that motion. Seconded by Mr. Curry. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all yes vote on that. Okay, we're at the public comments portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone to sign into addressing the board today?
We do.
Okay, all right. Before we get started, let me just kind of explain to everybody something that we do whenever we have people who sign in to address the board. It's a little bit different when you sign in to address the board versus being on the board's agenda. The open meeting law requires that all board of education meetings and all public meetings be, the public be given a three day notice for those meetings. So typically, our board agendas go out on Thursdays before the meeting that we have on Tuesdays. So you have Thursday, Friday, and Monday because the day of the meeting doesn't count. So for the public to be aware of what we're going to be doing at a given meeting. So if someone wants to be on our agenda and address the board, they contact the superintendent's office prior to that Thursday. Typically, we ask about maybe noon on Wednesdays. And then we know that they want to be on the agenda and the superintendent puts them on the agenda to address the board or whatever presents to the board, whatever they choose to do. Those people still have a right though, who aren't on the board's agenda, to address the board and to speak to us. And if you would even, those of you may have an agenda there, you will see at the top of the second paragraph even states that, you know, we have, this is a public meeting and everyone has the opportunity to address the board. But once again, there's just that one little stipulation that due to the open meetings law that everybody in the public has a, is aware, you know, should be aware or has a right to know what we're going to be doing. But that doesn't preclude people from addressing the board. The only real distinguishing difference in that is that when people come, like this group that we're going to have here today, we can have a conversation with you. We can hear what you have to say, we can ask you questions, we can converse back and forth. Someone who comes in and signs in with the board, we can't do that. Now, what we can do is listen and I assure you that we do, and we take mental or written notes in ourselves, but we can't interact with people who come in and just sign in. Because once again, the public in general doesn't know that this topic is going to be discussed. So it doesn't mean that we're trying to, you know, not understand what you have to say or aren't, you know, willing to talk to you. We just aren't able to, so don't be offended by that. That being said, we do have one person that spoke, that wants to speak to the board today. And if you'd like, you may come up here, and that's Kathy Basham, and she wants to talk to us about scheduling.
Thank you, Mr. Priestley, I understand your comments, I appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Kathy Basham and I come today sort of with a complaint from my daughter Candace Ansah, who is currently a Title I curriculum specialist at Dunbar Middle School. And she teaches special education assessment at West Virginia State University. And it's about her son who's in high school. And this letter is from her, I'm just reading her letter. "The first and only time I've spoken at a board meeting was during this week in 2012. I came as a teacher in the district discussing overcrowding in the classrooms and shifting of students from room to room due to class size and making decisions regarding those issues after the beginning of school. Now, seven years later, I'm writing to address the same issue. There is a scheduling mess at Lincoln County High School. School has been in session for nine days. Nine days in a six-week grading period constitutes 30% of the time. Thirty percent of the time when students should have been building relationships, pursuing relevant rigorous academic coursework, yet they are being pulled from classes and having their schedules completely changed. This is unacceptable. This isn't putting the needs of the students first, and this is disappointing. My son is serviced with the 504 plan. He has severe anxiety and has previously struggled with transitions during the beginning of school. On Wednesday, I discussed past issues with a school administrator and 504 coordinator during our annual meeting. I said this year he'd done exceedingly well. I said I felt that this was because unlike the previous two years, his original schedule had not been changed. He was able to meet his teacher prior to the beginning of school, know his routine, and establish it without change. Imagine my feelings when two days later, after that meeting, two days after that meeting, his schedule was completely changed without notification. I notified the administrator and the coordinator who changed his schedule back, however the damage has been done. This issue is not only affecting my child, but many children. Children in this district desperately need consistency. Oftentimes, that consistency, the only consistency, is at school. Many students do not have a voice to advocate on their behalf. I'm asking you to intervene and make sure these scheduling issues get resolved this year and for future academic years. Making sure that the needs of the students are first should always be the main priority. Lincoln County High School has so many opportunities available for students, and we need to give them every opportunity to shine. Thank you for your time in this matter."
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, now we're going to go to the presentations and reports portion of our meeting. On our agenda, we have LCHS students, Lemelson, MIT, Eureka Feast, Fest? Help me out here.
Eureka Fest.
Okay, who is going to be the spokesperson or persons or how are we doing this? I'm turning it over to your leader. Are you, are you the leader?
Yes.
Why don't you come up here and identify yourself? Possibly anybody else you want to. I noticed your co-host back in the back there, just kind of back there. But you feel free to, let us know who you are, please.
Okay, so my name is George Erling. I'm currently a senior at Lincoln County High School. And I am, my role this past year was as lead technician for our Lemelson MIT invent team that went to Eureka Fest. My, some of my colleagues over here who helped us out with this project this year. And while not everybody here was able to go on the trip that we had earlier this year during the summer, everybody here helped out through the year in creating our invention. And this is actually, right up here is the picture of our entire invent team. Right now, we are missing three of our members who are, who have other situations going on. Some of them weren't feeling too well. But this is our team that have been working together for this, for the last year to where most all of us were juniors. And, well, what I'm showing you here is actually the presentation that we brought to MIT. Because, see, what we did is that we were tasked to create an invention that would solve some sort of problem. The way that we got the money for this is by applying for a grant through the Lemelson MIT invent team's foundation. And they gave us money to try to find some sort of problem that we believe that we could fix. And for us, that was to work on automating a high tunnel. This is, this is an image of a high tunnel. They're similar to greenhouses in many senses, but they can be much smaller and easier to manage. And so in Lincoln County alone, we have a very high percentage of people who use high tunnels, higher than the, than other counties in our state. A lot of people around here use them. You may not see them a lot, but that's because they can be put out in almost anywhere because they're that manageable. The problem is though, is high tunnels take a whole lot of time and effort to manage. And it's basically, if you have a high tunnel that takes away almost all your free time. So what we decided to do was to work on automating one of these high tunnels, making it to where it can regulate its own temperature and water its own plants, do all those kind of jobs that a farmer would typically have to do. But now that can all be done by a system that we would install. And I'm not going to go, I'm not going in depth with the presentation as this is more just to talk about going on our trip to MIT. But this is everything that we worked on throughout the year, getting the, that just shows the percentages of how we used the grant. And if you notice, that says high tunnel replacement. The reason we have that is because there was a high tunnel that we were working with this previous year. It was destroyed in a spring storm, and so we're going to be getting that replaced. And we will, we are planning to automate that. As far as next steps, that will be actually working with the new high tunnel that we will be receiving. And so that's kind of just the base of this. But now getting into the actual trip up to Boston. These are a few pictures of our group. The picture right there on the left with us standing outside of the school is us getting prepared to leave for Boston. And we had to take three different vans of transportation. And so on the right picture over there, if you all can see that, okay, is just a picture of us having a little bit of a meeting before we actually went to MIT at the local, at the hotel that we were staying at that night. And these are just some more pictures of us. We got to make a stop at Hershey's Chocolate World, so that was definitely a very fun time. And the big, a big part of this entire project is that we were trying to not just confront this like a group of students who were forced into this together, we were trying to confront this as if we were an actual team. The way to build a team is by doing stuff together such as going to a chocolate world. So it was definitely a great time. And then at the bottom left corner, that is a picture of the members who were able to go to MIT. We are there wearing our merch, our shirts, and we are just having a great time. These are some pictures at the actual Eureka Fest. We got to hear from many interesting individuals at this, it was very informative. And we got to hear from, from people who are really revolutionizing many industries, people who are revolutionizing the health industry, the food industry. And we got to hear from a lot of people who have invented before, such as, one of the men who spoke was the creator of the 3D printer, which those are, that invention is actually being utilized at our school through our program. So getting to meet those kind of people really opened up an entirely new horizon of just new contacts and more input. Because we also then got to present our own invention. This is a model that we brought of our automated high tunnel. And we spent a few hours that day, set up at that table, presenting to these people. And we got to get a lot of feedback. A lot of people do, did not know what a high tunnel was, as it's not common knowledge, but we got to explain that to them and tell them the idea. Along with many other young inventors, because there were many teams that were there presenting their own invention. And so getting to meet people that are the same age as us and kind of combating another problem, it, it was very good and very informative. In the bottom right corner, that is a picture of one of our members, she is not here today. That is Chloe Gilkerson, and she was being interviewed by PBS at the presentation. So we got to meet the lady who was doing this earlier in the day, she actually came overnight with us. She works with PBS News and just PBS in general. And so Chloe got to be interviewed, even though she was a bit nervous because she's not a big fan of cameras. But we all got to get a bunch of new experiences. And this is, these are just more pictures of the actual MIT. On the top right over there, that is a picture of the, I don't know if I want to say trophy, but that is what we received for actually attending this and working through the year, making our project. And we have that now back at our school. It's a pretty, it's pretty nice. It's always good to hold something like that after such a large project. And we also got to go around New York City, and that was just a really great time. Because we got to learn a whole lot on this trip, but beyond that, we really did become a family. We got to do a whole lot together, and we all felt like the, it was definitely a worthwhile experience. And that's all the slides are.
That's all the slides.
Yeah. So thank you all for your time and for listening. And then, are we allowed, are we allowed to take questions?
Yes.
I want to make sure. We make the rules up here, so. My first question now, MIT Massachusetts Institute Technology.
Yes.
Okay, I'm impressed already. Now, you said you all received a grant for this?
Yes.
How long was this grant in the making?
So the way that this actually worked is that a year, about a year before we actually received the grant, one of, one of the workers at our school, Mr. Tim Elliott, actually applied for this grant. He no longer works at LCHS, but he's the one who applied for this grant. We originally weren't, there was originally a slight misunderstanding in the grant, but there was a very long process of eliminating people who have applied for this grant. So, you know, working down to a smaller amount of people because this took over a year as Mr. McCormick had to go to a meeting about this and learn about it. Because it turned out to be much different than what we thought it was going to be. We thought it was just going to be install some solar panels at our school, and then we found out that we got to make an invention. So that was a pretty big surprise to us, but.
I'll add on that one, that was definitely a little surprise because Tim told me that we were just going to go learn about solar panels and come back. And I get there, my first day, I'm in the elevator going up, and there's a, there's this little short blonde lady asking all these questions about what we're here for, what we're doing. So I tell her, I'm just here to learn about solar panels, I've got a grant to put solar, and she was like, what program are we here for? I was like, I told her, she goes, none of that, that's my program. And she was like, who was running the whole thing? She goes, that's not what this is about. She kind of laughed and chuckled. It was literally, we thought we were just putting solar panels and a generator in the building out back, that big blue building that you guys know and love. And then like that afternoon, it was a panic phone call to Dana, to Larry, to Seth, and we're all on the phone. I'm sitting in a dorm room in Cambridge sweating to death because they don't have air conditioning. And we're trying to figure out what we're going to do. So within the next couple of weeks, we got a team of kids together and finished out, finished out filling out the grant stuff. And I think technically this was like a year and a half process before we went. Because it's not like we could do this grant again this year because all of the deadlines and stuff are already, by the time everyone goes to Eureka Fest, the second year, the second round people, because we go up the year before. So I went up the year before as a finalist. And then at the end, they picked our project, and then we went back again this year as, as a, as a, as a winning team.
It was a pretty exciting experience because across the country, there were only in the end 15 schools that received this grant in the US. And so going into this, we were not sure if we were going to get this grant because there are schools who have been working on this for possibly multiple years to try and get this grant. But we ended up getting it, so that was a little bit on our side. So, but that's about the process that we had to go through to actually receive this grant.
I think there were initially over 300 and some applicants for this process. And then we were in the top 30, 36 that went back to Eureka Fest last year. And then after that top 30, it was, they cut half. I mean, we were the, we were the top 15, and that's why we got to go 13.
I find it interesting, one comment you made there about high tunnels themselves, it's kind of foreign to a lot of people, they weren't even, what is that even? I think that's interesting. Now, did you all have the opportunity to view other schools' projects?
Yes, yeah, so whenever we were set up there, we were presenting, like the pictures I showed you, that was just at our table. There were many other tables that were set up around with the other school winners that were there, along with a few college students who were there with the Eureka Fest. And so we got to go around and see many other inventions. Like, well, for example, there was one school that we met that had, that was inventing a system to help prevent fires in large buildings. And it was really interesting, like, it was a system that would essentially deploy this thing over the entire building that would prevent the fire because it's something that they dealt with in their area. And then, so that's like one of the much larger scale ones. But it could also just be really simple, like there were a few people there who we got to meet that were inventing something that would make it to where your trash can wouldn't end up falling down and opening up. Because they, they lived in an area where you roll out your trash can to the side of the road. So these are very large projects, along with kind of the smaller projects. But we did get to meet a lot of these students, and it's really interesting because a lot of them used some kind of similar tactics that we did and just the materials and such. So, yeah, it was really good, and some of us keep contact with those people we got to meet.
Any important, if you have any questions for this?
I would like to have a good trip.
Yes, yeah.
Let me ask you this now. Is this at the point to where it's achievable by the average farmer?
That is the point that we are actually planning to get to. We were hoping to get to that point sooner on, but as I had said, with our high tunnel that had been destroyed, we were not able to implement this system into the actual full-scale high tunnel. And so because of that, we are not ready to put it out there yet because we've only gotten to work with a model, and the sizes are much different. So getting to work with those kind of motors and stuff, those systems will be tested out this year. And our plan is, is that by the end of this year, the system will be ready for the farmer. And we don't plan to use this as a product that gets sold exactly. We are actually going to take our idea, and we use code, that's where the tech aspect comes in. But we are going to take everything that we do, and we will put it onto a website that can be obtained by those farmers. And it's what's called open source. And so with them being able to obtain that, all they need to do is just get these materials. And we, we've talked about packaging together, something like getting the materials they need, and then they can buy that in a pack. But if a farmer already has these materials or just needs to buy a few, then we plan to give them the code that they need for free to help expand this, so it's not, they, so people don't think, I have to spend a ton of money to do this. We want to make it to where this is no longer a product thing, it's to help the production of food. Because we already know that it's really hard to get farm-to-table food, and we believe that this will definitely help that.
Do you have an estimated cost?
As far as estimated costs go, we have not decided on that exactly. Because there are some components of this that are more expensive. Of course, the most expensive component of this would be the high tunnel itself, but many farmers already have that. And so that is still something that we will have to calculate. Because something else that I forgot to add in is that our idea was with this is that it is actually solar powered so that the high tunnels can truly be anywhere along with being more eco-friendly. But as far as an actual price, we do not have that yet.
That's great, very interesting. Hopefully, we'll get to the point where it would be accessible by many. But even the, down the line, maybe there could be something at the, where local farmers or they should have an interest in that, where you could, you know, come to take a comment, you know, seeing that.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we've talked about, and they have, you know, well, up at our school, they do the agriculture auctions. They host those up there, and so that's something that we're probably hoping that we can get set up up there for just that kind of instance.
Because often, there are those that may not be computer savvy, so to speak, and, you know, make it available and well, you know, known to them that this would be a possibility. Like you say, I know Mr. Wilkinson has a lot of interest in that, he's mentioned that before, as have a lot of other people. And, you know, all we have to do is just listen to the news and things every day about food, what's going to happen down the road. We need to be coming up with some ideas, some new ideas that presently aren't there, not just for locally here, but around the world really. And maybe things like what you're all talking about here will help solve some of those problems. So we commend you for what you've done, you've done a good job. Do, you know, I would love these slides, and how come Mr. McCormick seems to get his face in all these slides? If y'all understand.
He's, he's a pretty big fan of taking.
He was like the tallest one on our group, so whenever we would take a group picture, he'd be like, here, give me the phone, and have like his own like selfie arm stick.
I'm just not sure his face would be over in one corner, you know.
He's a very modest cameraman, he has to make sure he's in every picture, yeah.
He wanted to show that he was a presence with.
Oh, yes.
He did a very good job of that. But I don't know who all of you were able to actually make the trip, but I hope, and I'm sure you enjoyed it, if you don't mind.
Yeah, there's only two of us here who weren't able to go. And so I'd say as far as the people who got to go, I mean, I liked it, what about you guys? It was a pretty good time, yeah. Everybody here is a senior, yeah. We had one member of our team who is now a junior, but she, that was Chloe Gilkerson, and she's just not over here.
I know, you went with, by a van, is that how you travel?
Yes, yeah, we took three different vans, which were driven by our chaperones. They've been, they also helped us out through the year, but, yeah.
Well, once again, it sounds great, I'm glad you're all involved in that, commend your staff and those that were involved in, you know, curating this in the first place, Mr. Elliott, of course, has left us, but we'll give him some credit too, you know, he isn't here no longer for what he's been doing here. He went to New York, obviously, that's a great experience for those that haven't been to New York. But one thing I want to ask you, Hershey, Pennsylvania, did you get out, you were out in Hershey, is that true, in the town? Hershey, Pennsylvania, it smells like chocolate, doesn't it? Doesn't it smell like chocolate? The whole town, it smells like, you go through Hershey, PA, and it smells like chocolate, which makes sense, I guess, I always noticed that when I'm going through there. Okay, anything else you all, any of you want to say or whatever? But if not, we appreciate you coming to tell us this today, it's very positive.
You guys have anything?
I think George should cover it up there.
Yeah, but so.
You've done a good job, George has. He's had good teaching.
Yeah. So thank you guys so much for your time and your support of us throughout this year, thank you all.
Thanks, thank you all. Okay, you all, whenever leavers are, say as you may, you may certainly agree to gather, we're going to spend our business here, but.
I think I get back to last. I came, I sent in the email by the end of seventh, so we got.
Thanks for coming. Yeah, hopefully we can get this, but in our high tunnels, sooner than later.
Do it now.
That'll be good, be good.
Well, good Lord willing, it'll be in by, by spring. Farmer Bureau is going to come in and help me get it set up.
You reached the point then, if you had an act with, you know, one that was working, then people could come in and see really what you're talking about.
Well, we was going to, the plastic, little off the other one there. And they went for a short.
Weather sometimes affects the.
Yes, sir, it does.
Thanks a lot.
Thank y'all.
Okay, let's move on then to the administrative section of the agenda. Do you have a motion, look at those please?
Say.
Okay, Mr. Curry made the motion, Mr. Wilkinson seconded that, Mr. McKeon?
Okay, I made designation of the following service personnel, providing specialized healthcare for the 2019-2020 school year. Item B, Marshall student Ashley Hoffman, job shadow Carrie Smith at Lincoln County High School for the 2019-2020 fall semester. Item C, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item D, agreements with the following as supervisory aides for the 2019-2020. Item D, agreements with the following as supervisory aides for the 2019-2020 school year, according to the provisions of West Virginia Code 18A-5-8. And I would like to get to strike Sherri Codmore and Gail Helsworth.
That's West Ham.
Item E, out-of-state trip to Malina, Georgia for the national rain competition for JR OTC, October 31st, 2019 through November 3rd, 2019. Item M is out-of-state travel for the following personnel. Item G is an agreement with Southwestern Community Action Council Incorporated, whereby breakfast and lunch will be provided for all Head Start students and up to five adults per classroom, per day, for the 2019-2020 school year, according to the terms of the agreement. Item H, approval to create and post a kindergarten position at Hamlin PKA. Item I, approval of salary upgrade according to House Bill 206, West Virginia Code 18A-4, two E D and two E for Allison Stick. Item J, a contract with Brenda G. McGann for the provision of physical therapy services for eligible students for the 2019-2020 school year, according to the terms of the contract.
Okay. All right, do you guys have any questions on any of those items under the administrative section? Okay, move back. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Anybody yes?
Yes.
Okay, all yes votes. All right, let's go to the finance section then. Do you have a motion for those items? Ms. Smith? And Mr. Curry seconded that. Mr. Ellis?
Schedule of invoice is $424,935.29.
Of course, that's attached. Got any questions, just let me know. Nothing further on that? Is that an all yes vote on the finance item?
Yes.
Yes.
All yes. All right, let's go to personnel then. Have a motion for those items?
I'm here.
Mr. Baker?
Second.
Mr. Wilkerson seconded that motion. What's your name again, Landbow? Mr. Landbow?
Buckatelli. Item A, employment of critical personnel, B, leave of absence, and C, is retirement and resignation. We did not give you a list of vacant positions because we have a posting that does not go down until four o'clock today, which includes the principal at Hamlin PKA. Of course, it doesn't close until four today, but right now, we have five in-county candidates and one out-of-county candidate. That's what we have now, but we won't go until four o'clock. And the plan is to interview tomorrow morning and have you a name, so someone can get hired by September the 3rd. That's our plan right now. Everything goes as planned.
Does next week's agenda come out tomorrow afternoon?
It's supposed to, but I'd like to kick it down the road a day. Because if not, Sean, we, it's possible we wouldn't be able to hire a principal until 17.
You have my blessing.
Now you're blessed.
I just wanted, I just wanted to be ready, that's all.
Yeah, I hadn't planned on saying anything, but yeah.
Okay, so it's going to go out on what day now?
We'd like to be able to send it out Thursday afternoon because the interviews are tomorrow. So, because there's no way to interview and get a name on the agenda in time for Tuesday's meeting. We've got a holiday in there, that's what's kinda throwing us off our schedule.
The meeting is scheduled on Tuesday.
Right. So we're not, there's no way, the best case scenario, you have a name ready to go Wednesday, the only reason is the Thursday.
Well, I'm looking at just the three-day notice. Is that the only item that would be, that you would require a timeline? Is that the only thing, reason that you wouldn't want to put an agenda out on tomorrow?
It's because of that position.
We'll, we'll talk about it, okay. All right, okay, personnel. Items is presented by Mr. Landbow. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All yes. Okay, comments, concerns, board members. Rowdy, Carol, do you guys have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Great, Larry? I have just one thing and I've left it here, Rowdy, you and Carol too. At our next meeting, it's that time of year again, we're gonna be developing the superintendent's goals for the coming year. Seems like we just, we're gonna do it again. What we provided for you, Mr. Midkell made you a copy of last year's and that will give you some, you know, so you can kind of refresh your memory. And when we have our meeting, then, of course, as you know, a couple of those goals are mandated by law, but then we have some flexibility on the others. So, you know, if you wanna look at those, if you've got some ideas, maybe some things we should be adding, maybe some things we don't need any longer, just kind of give you an advance chance to look at those things. But we'll be doing that in executive session as required by law before September the 15th, so barring another meeting that I'm not aware of, it would have to be on the 3rd. Okay, that's only thing I have. Nobody has anything else? Mr. Midkell?
Just a reminder that next Tuesday at 5:00 PM, we'll recognize our service appointed year and teacher of the year for 2020. Always an exciting evening for that activity. I hope that Sean can join us.
Soccer game, first ever soccer game. Sixth grader, but Sue Burton said she's got it taken care of. Sorry.
All right, and let's see, we talked about the principal's position. Otherwise, I'd just, I'd like to request a legal update, executive session.
Okay, Mr. Midkell has asked for an executive session to get forward a legal update at 1:38 PM. Have a motion to that factor?
Yes, so moved.
Mr. Baker made that motion, seconded.
Sure.
Mr. Curry seconded that. All yes votes to go in executive session for a legal update.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, all yes votes, 1:38 PM.
Personal, personal matters?
It is personal.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.